This conference will now be recorded.
I will vote.
So do we have a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve the annual donation to the library.
Okay, second?
I'll second.
And all in favor?
Aye.
The number one approval of the council minutes from January 25th. In looking through those minutes, it appears that after the after the comments from number four, there's no indication of the motion that was made for recess with the second and voted on. And I believe that that should be part of the public record. Because there was action taken. Mr. Atkins?
Yes, that is correct. The Open Meetings Act requires that all votes, orders, or decisions must be recorded in the minutes.
Do we need council action to send this back for revision?
It suggests that we allow the city secretary to review the video that is online and update the minutes accordingly.
Second?
I mean, that is fine, it's the first, but if the council is comfortable that that action did occur, you just ask the city secretary to make a motion to approve the minutes.
I move we approve the minutes, subject to the revision.
Okay.
So just for clarity sake, that's something that I will add. I typed the minutes up from the last meeting since Shayna was not here. So I apologize for missing that. That's not at her feet, that is at mine. So I'll be happy to go back and look at that.
Okay, so we've got a motion by Mr. Loftus to approve pending the revision. And we'll have King and all in favor?
Aye.
Very good, thank you. She has to make it, okay, good. All right, monthly staff reports and board minutes, we have any comments?
They were not in the packet. We did not have all of that in in time due to all the illnesses that we had within City Hall and other departments last week, so they'll be at your next meeting.
Okay, all right, and first page. All right, so regular agenda, I'd ask for it to be put on the agenda, which it was, and we've already talked about it. The Rome Community Library Annual Donation, that's number four. Number five, Upper Trinity Grants. And Jill Garcia, representative with Upper Trinity, is here to talk to you.
Awesome, well, good evening, council members. Great to see y'all again. Jill Garcia, Assistant General Manager with the Upper Trinity Groundwater Conservation District, here today to be speaking on some rainwater harvesting grants and resources that the district provides.
Could you let us know what your address is?
Oh, sure, absolutely. Eighteen fif- oh, personal address or business address, sorry, I should have asked. Yes, sir. Oh, yes, sir, 365 Westford Street, just near the Taco Casa, actually. It's a little bit of a problem for me and my husband, but yes. So, yes, the district several years ago had partnered with the Parker County Sheriff's Posse Fairgrounds in Weatherford, Texas. There was a champion of rainwater harvesting and cattle there, Mr., the late Mr. Melton Harms. And he approached the district several years ago with the idea of a large-scale rainwater harvesting system at the fairgrounds with a new barn that they had recently constructed. So nothing like that of that size had been done on a governmental building in Parker County up until that point. And so Melton joined with our team. We formed an education committee to evaluate and assess the potential for it. And so after that, there was around a $50,000 grant that was distributed to the sheriff's posse, along with a 50,000 gallon rainwater harvesting system, filtration systems, and of course, the gutters and transport systems. So since then, the system has been in operation since early 2020, and it won the Texas Water Development Board's Rain Catcher of the Year Award that year. Since then, we realized that there was a need for rainwater harvesting education and outreach, especially in our counties where groundwater is very precious. And so we continued that with working with Wise County at the Decatur Fairgrounds. If y'all have happened to seen, pretty much a copy paste of the same system. So another 50,000 gallon tank, additional filtration systems, and I believe they catch off of the beef and chicken bonds at the Decatur Fairgrounds. So that's currently operational and has been for several years. Our understanding is that they've been using the water for the shows when the youth come in and when they have their, I would say, their animals there, as well as maintenance of the grounds. So those have been successful. And then the more recent projects that the district has completed includes the Central Community Fire Department Chief David Chilcutt in Weatherford, Texas. They have a 40,000 gallon system, and they currently use that for the trainings that they do with the firefighters at Weatherford College. So they'll pretty much spray it on the roof as part of the training, and it runs back into the system. And then Mr. Commissioner Larry Walden in Parker County has recently completed his tank on his barn at the precinct sheds. And so that is another 60,000 gallon rainwater harvesting tank along with filtration. So the district has a line item in its budget every single year for these projects. And the application period normally runs from November until the end of February. So there is still time, but just wanted to make y'all aware of that as we understand that groundwater is not always available readily in our four counties, and rainwater harvesting is an excellent alternative.
These are grants, and by grant, that means that Upper Trinity would come in and install your tank as long as you have a location and this and that?
We give the applicants the opportunity to select their contractor, although there are multiple rainwater harvesting contractors in our area that will do free estimates.
Okay, how complicated is filling out that grant?
Oh, very simple. We've designed it, I think it's maybe two pages long. You just have the opportunity as a description of the system, the estimated amount that you're anticipating the system will cost. We also have a cost-sharing component, but I'll be honest, the majority of the systems that have won the grant, we funded 100% of them. So that's very
Okay, that's what we would be interested in, is 100%.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. And it is simple, I could do it. Because I know there were a couple of council meetings ago that the city administrator had indicated she had an awful lot of work to do and there wasn't time, you know, to do grants.
Yes, ma'am.
But if I could do it?
It is definitely easy to fill out, and the district staff is always happy to help if there are questions about the grant application itself, we're happy to help fill that out. We also have a list of those contractors. If y'all are ever looking to call around and see what a competitive bid would be.
But the, filling it out, there's no charge in getting it in?
No, ma'am, that is a good question, but yeah, completely agree.
Okay, and can we anticipate, you know, on a yearly basis to have? I was thinking, you know, we could use it over at the parks for watering. We were in the restricted stages last summer. But that's even better if they could use it at the fire hall.
Absolutely, no, it's been used for domestic use, irrigation, outdoor watering, especially with rainwater being, I was about to say, it usually just has less total dissolved solids in it, and plants prefer it for the most part.
Okay, and I could, go.
What size project could we possibly have?
Well, I think that the best indicator of that would be determining the structure that y'all would want to catch from. Because normally, when you would look at the roof square footage, then we could do a small calculation and determine how much rain y'all could catch with one inch of rainwater, and then look at what the annual rainfall in Rome would be. It's somewhere between 32 and 33 inches annually. And then that would help us steer the most, you'd probably say, the most financial burden of it, which is the tank itself. And then afterwards, just the installation of the filtration systems and the gutters, if there aren't any on the building.
Is it limited to structural runoff?
Not necessarily. Actually, there are some that you can catch rainfall through permeable beds. There's some different projects in Austin that have that done, so it doesn't necessarily need to be.
Is this something we should possibly talk about further on Saturday?
It's actually not on the agenda for Saturday. We could certainly put it on a different one moving forward. I believe Jill had spoken to some extent on this before, but we can definitely look into it. But you have a deadline of 29 February.
We just have this severe problem with our rainwater runoff infiltrating into our sewer system. And I'm just trying to have a win-win possibility there.
I'm curious as to what the effectiveness is on the ground beds that you talked about? Because the state of our facilities right now, I don't know how much how much the roofs can stand, you know, as we do have rain.
Yes, ma'am, absolutely. And a site assessment with the contractor would probably be the most effective way to look at what sort of rainfall and catchment system y'all would need. But there have been some incredibly ingenious systems that have been constructed. So I have no doubt there's one that will work for y'all's facilities.
If council wants to give direction for us to pursue this, if it is simply a two-page document to fill out, Ms. Garcia could email it to me. We could have that on the agenda for the 22nd and still make their deadline on the 29th.
To the comment that Mayor Mitchell made regarding the city administrator's time and availability, I would want to know, Mayor Mitchell, is that, and, Mr. Gann, is that something that you are willing to work together on? Is it something that one of you is able to take on? Whose responsibility is it going to be? Because it is a very quick turnaround.
I'm sure that's at the mayor's discretion. The concept of a two-page, easy-to-fill-out form is a lot different than what we've talked about with some of these other grants that Mr. Loftus and I have reviewed. So something like that's not onerous. Something that's 10 pages, 20 pages, or a federal grant, that is going to take more time than I have to allow at the moment towards that type of project.
I had offered just free of the time.
I'd just like tonight to be able to discuss some of this with our Public Works Director to see what his thoughts are prior to actually going forward.
So if we fill this out, Jill, and it's not really onerous to do, then I can have it prepared and in your packet for the 22nd? We could have Mr. Dominguez provide you with an opportunity to ask him questions back and forth about that, and then you can make a decision at that meeting. You still have about a week to turn it in to them.
Do you have someone with the district who could come in and talk with us about the possibilities?
Yes, ma'am. We currently have three to four selected contractors that have been working with the district that are familiar with this. And then there is also a state database of some contractors that might be available as well. So I imagine a conversation with them and y'all's utility staff would be helpful.
Do they do that free of charge?
Most of them do, yes, ma'am. We'll double check, but yeah, most of them.
I move to place this item on the agenda for February 22nd.
Thank you.
I'll say it again.
All in favor?
Aye.
Good, very good, thank you. Ms. Garcia, thank you so much for coming. All right. All right, number six, that's text done, I'm going to table that for now. Number seven, family park resident user fees. Mrs. Shirley Mize is going to address the council.
Hello, my name is Shirley Mize, I live at 170 Russell. Good evening, mayor and council. I'm here today to announce a plan to host an Easter egg hunt for the community on March 23rd, 2024 at the Rome Family Park from 1:30 to 3:30 p.m. All public is invited to come participate in the fun and activities for our much-needed event for our community. At this time, I would like to ask the city council to waive the $25 electric usage and the $75 permit fee for the event. The event activities are Easter egg hunts based upon age groups, games, raffle, bounce house, food truck for a public purchase of food, and snow cones for a public purchase of cones. I am looking for support in other ways, donations to cover costs, eggs, candy, and volunteers to help with the event activities and setup. The city of New York will be having their Easter egg hunt for the same day, but at a different time. So everyone in the area can venture to both events in New York and in Rome area. I hope the city can show its support by waiving the usage and the permit fee. I asked if the city is able to also post a flyer on the webpage to advertise the event. I thank you for your time, members.
Thank you, Mrs. Mize. Any comments?
Mayor, just remind the council that you can only waive fees if you can articulate a public purpose that's being served by the waiver.
The event is open to the public. It's not just for you and your family.
I was there last year, it was a good time.
It was a big turnout last year, lots and lots of folks. Nobody went home empty-handed.
I make the motion to waive the fees. I'll second the motion.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Very good. Very good. Thank you, Mrs. Mize. All right, I want to talk about open meetings. Kind of going along with the minutes from the January 25th meeting. It was after Ms. King made the motion for recess, and then Jimmy Johnson seconded it. And then it was voted on. And the council went to the back room. And I did not see them go into the room, but I was here in the in the gallery when they came out of the back room. And I'm going to say it was probably 10 minutes. And so I've got a question. It seems to me that it was essentially, I don't know what was discussed in the back, and we did have people out here. And, you know, they asked me, well, what's going on? I don't know what's going on, because I was not a part of it. And so that's going to be my question to the city attorney. It appears we did have a meeting within a meeting, but it was not open to the public.
There were only two members of council that were in the back room at that time. At a time. When a third requested to come in, one stepped out.
Can confirm that, since I was kicked out.
Then I apologize, I just saw you guys coming out, and I don't remember anyone being in the gallery, you know, like I said, talking to folks.
I'm on that. Just a reminder, under the Open Meetings Act, we have to post our meetings, and it has to be on the agenda to discuss an item. If it's not on the agenda, it cannot be discussed. We can only go into closed or executive session after the mayor reads into the record, into the public record, what section of the act we're going under. So you guys have it on the agenda, and she has the four primary options that are available to go into executive session. Those have to be read, open, in an open session into the meeting. It has to be announced that we're going into executive session under one of those sections. And once that's read into the record, you don't have to take any further action on it, then you can go into a closed section, session, excuse me, and you can conduct the business as posted or as recited by the mayor. That's the section we're going under. So if you don't announce, or if the mayor didn't announce an executive session, then it wasn't an executive session, it wasn't a closed session. So now the next analysis is to have a meeting, did you have a quorum of the council? That means three or more members of the council have to be present. And then the second element of a meeting is, were you deliberating regarding public's business? And if there were three of you at that meeting and you were discussing the public's business, it has to be posted, and it has to be conducted in an open forum where the public can go. So if you exclude the public, and you have a quorum, and you're discussing public business, that is not a proper meeting. But if, based on what I've heard tonight, there were just two of you in the room, then that's not a quorum, and so that doesn't meet the definition under the Open Meetings Act of being a meeting, so it can't be a quote "illegal" meeting, because you didn't have enough to make a meeting. But I will caution you that there is a concept that the Attorney General has promulgated, and it has come up a few times in court cases over the years. It's called a rolling quorum. And that is, to use the best example I can think of off the top of my head, is council member one can't pick up the phone and call council member two and say, I'd like to talk to you about our dog catcher ordinance. And council member two picks up the phone and calls council member three and says, I'd like to talk to you about our dog cancel ordinance. Three calls four. Well, even though one never talked to four, because the four of you had a rolling conversation regarding the city's business, the Attorney General has determined that's improper. So when you guys went into that meeting, you needed to be careful. The two of you couldn't be discussing a topic, kick somebody out, let somebody else come in there and continue that discussion on that topic. That's a potential rolling forum. I didn't hear anything to suggest that that's what happened, but you need to be very careful about that. Historically, and I'm old enough that I can talk about this, that used to be something that was talked about on your phone. But it can also be done electronically, it can be done with text messaging, it can be done with any of the various social media platforms that are available. So if you don't have it properly posted, you need to be very careful that it doesn't become a forum of a discussion that wasn't posted. So with that, I don't think there was a violation of the Open Meetings Act, in my opinion. But again, I'm not the one that makes that decision. I don't prosecute that. That's a decision of the county attorney's office. I would actually defend you guys in that, in my role as city attorney.
Got your caution, council?
My caution.
Okay.
Mayor, as you say, I do think having our restroom back there complicates issues, because there's no other place to go to the bathroom in this building. And so if you're not in that room, you don't necessarily know what occurred. On top of that, I do think that council is cautioned, not only at this meeting, but when they have orientation, when they go through ethics training. So this is not as if this is a caution for this meeting. They are cautioned multiple times throughout their time as a council member. So let's just state that on the record so that we understand what we're dealing with this evening.
And let's also state that at the meeting in question, there was minimal order established in this room. A council member was coming under, in my opinion, was coming under attack by a member of the audience. That's not heard in the video, because she was not at the microphone. Multiple members of the audience were not at the microphone, so you could not hear their comments. And so that we do not get in a shouting match, that is not good for any of us, I requested a recess. And Mr. Johnson was kind enough to second to give Ms. Ty a moment to collect herself and the audience the same privilege.
I would disagree that Ms. Ty was attacked, as you say.
We agree to disagree then.
But I do think that, I think it's very, that you, since you did bring it up, it's not really on the agenda, but since you did bring it up, I think it's important to remember our residents are our residents, they are constituents, they are the people we answer to. And I'm not, I mean, they can't attack us in a meeting, and I think it's
There was an appropriate time for public comment, and they were interfering with council business. And you allowed it. I called a recess.
I did allow, I did allow the conversation, yes, I did. You know, if people can't speak at the council meeting, when are they supposed to have an opportunity to speak?
I also believe that councilperson Ty has the right to her opinion and to express it in the meeting, along with every other councilperson. I also find great irony in the fact that the topic being discussed at the time was completely outside of the jurisdiction of the city of Rome.
If I can just, and just a reminder, we don't have in Texas town hall-style council meetings. This is the one time the council gets together to legally discuss the city's business amongst the council. It is not the opportunity for the citizens to speak. They have a limited three-minute section of public comments. But the council meeting itself is the business of the council, so they get the priority. And as you know, mayor, you're the one with the gavel, you get to control the meeting. And at any time, if you want to ask the police department to remove somebody, that's your prerogative, to maintain the decorum. And the purpose of the meeting is to allow deliberations amongst you elected officials.
All right. Any other comments? Let's move along. Number nine, bond council presentation capital project financing options and deadlines.
Thank you, mayor. We do have Mr. Dransfield on the line. Your agenda commentary for this item is fairly sparse, because he has the knowledge and the background to provide you with information if council makes the decision to call for bond election at our May election period. So we're going to try and unmute him. He is not able to get in by video, but he is in by phone call so that he can explain the difference between COs, GOs, revenue bonds, et cetera, so that when we discuss the projects that are needed for the city on Saturday, you have the information you need from which to make a decision. One of the things that they have kept me apprised of is there is a deadline. If council does make a decision to call for one or more projects to go on the ballot for May, we have to have that decision made by the 16th of February. And that has to come at an official council meeting. So last time we missed the deadline, this time we will not. Mr. Dransfield, are you online? Can you unmute your, on your end, sir? Can you hear me? Okay, well, it shows on art in that you are, so I'm just going to put you on speaker and hold it to the mic. So you'll probably want to mute your, so that you can put things back. Would that work? All right, sir. Let's give it a try. Okay.
Well, can you all, can you all hear me?
Yes, sir, we can.
Yeah, I'm going to, I'm going to hang up off the other link, because I'm getting all kinds of feedback. So I'll just use the cell phone. Okay, you should be able to hear me just fine, hopefully, right?
Yes.
Okay, well, good evening to all of you. I think, you know, the city administrator talked to us a little bit ago about, you know, the prospect of a May bond election for 2024, which is May the 4th. Now, you've got certain timeframes you have to call bond elections for. There are only two times a year you can do that, May and November. So to be targeting for the May date, you do have to, as indicated earlier, have to affect the call and formally call it with all the determinations made, no later than February the 16th for this year. So what I think you might have before you is a draft of a resolution that's kind of a working document for you, that speaks in terms of, for the selection, three potential propositions, if you want to do that.
Bob, if I can introduce right quick, we saved the draft for their conversation on Saturday. This is just more of a high-level overview of the options.
Okay, thank you. I'll go on that basis then. So you have to determine what purposes you want to submit to the voters. And with that, you've got to determine how much, it's kind of a not-to-exceed number, that you would submit to the voters for that purpose. And each one of those propositions need to kind of stand on their own. You can't have one general proposition that says, we want to do everything for the city that the city needs to get done. So what we've talked a little bit about are propositions like your water wells, the west wastewater treatment plant, and the improvements of your sanitary sewer lines, or replacement of those. Those would be three potential propositions in and of themselves, should you elect to go that route. So when you go down the process during that, and we've also set it up where the, and this is what you've done historically, that the Wise County Elections Administration Department, you know, they will be the ones really conducting the election for you. But from your perspective, But from your perspective, you need to have, by the time you, when you call this election, you have to have an action item done. It can either be a resolution or an ordinance that specifies the purpose for which you want to submit, and the maximum not-to-exceed dollar amount that you want to submit in each one of those propositions. There are other mechanical things that are associated with any kind of a document, whether it be an ordinance or resolution. Things like, you've got to have some financial findings now that are in there that are based on what your current debt is, and then what the expectation of this new debt would be. And there can be some assumptions along those lines. So you do have to go through the formal process, though, and it has to be done with some degree of finality. So if you're going to have your meeting on Saturday, and if that was the target date for discussing, as you would say, Proposition A, and they now just do A, B, and C, and D, as opposed to 1, 2, 3, and 4. But Proposition A is going to be for X purpose in an amount not to exceed X number of dollars. And you have plugged that in. And ultimately, that's, the council needs to act on that. You know, and typically, you're going to have two things when you look at any document that you're going to see. One is what I'm going to call the real contract with the voters, which is more of a paragraph form, that highlights not only the purpose and the dollar amount, but has some other mechanics about how the bonds could be sold, whether they be a negotiated sale or a public sale, those types of things. And they have, you know, a not-to-exceed 40 years maximum maturity, and that's the state law maximum maturity. You can make that less, but you can also have the proposition, say, a not-to-exceed 40 years, and end up doing a 15, or 10, or 20-year maturity, whatever makes sense for you all, when you look at the financial impact of that. And then that's going to be a little different than what it is in the ballot itself. So the ballot is, in essence, the Reader's Digest version, the shorthand version of what the legal proposition is. And so you'll look at those things, and it'll just be a summary of what you're talking about. So normally, for example, if you're going to do something like water wells, the ballot would say something like, you know, constructing and improving water wells within the city, or something to that effect. So you go through that process, but to start that process going, then you have to get that action item done before the 16th of February. There are certain publication requirements that need to be established, and also posting requirements both on the city's website and within the community. And we would coordinate that with you, should that be the decision, the council has to proceed. A couple of other things just to be mindful of. If you do a bond election and a proposition gets voted down, then for that purpose it was voted down, you're precluded for a period of three years from issuing certificates of obligation, which are non-voted, but have a petition process potentially. You're precluded for three years from issuing certificates of obligation for that purpose that was voted down. So one of the ways that people think about that is you try to make those propositions that are in the election specific enough, so you don't jeopardize the ability to do something that's needed for some of the reasons that you may elect to have a certificate of obligation issued for. That's another type of debt instrument that you can well use. And another type of debt instrument you can use is a revenue-only certificate. So if, for example, you wanted to have a financing that was done through the Texas Water Development Board, as you all have done, and oftentimes, they like to buy those either through certificates of obligation or through straight revenue bonds. But you have to figure that out, and if you're going to go that route with a certificate of obligation, you don't want to have a situation where you've had a negative vote prior to that, for that three-year period of time I'm talking about. So that's a lot to digest as an overview, but I'll stop here for a second to see if this is eliciting any questions that you all might have that hopefully I can answer.
Not as of yet, Bob.
So fundamentally, it's up to you all to decide, A, do you want to have the election? B, do you want to have it on May the 4th of 2024? C, what are the purposes that you want to have that election for? And then, D, make sure that you're comfortable with the purposes. E, make sure that you have a dollar amount, that is, your not-to-exceed number. And that, again, just to reemphasize that, it does not obligate you to issue that many bonds. Let's just say you put, a proposition gets said you want to issue, and just take a hypothetical number, $5 million for something. And right now that you think you only really need to have $3 million immediately, but you think you might need $2 more million in two or three years, that authorization would go for those full $5 million. But you're not obligated to issue the full amount of that authorized debt. So you'll hear the term in the world that I live in, it's authorized but unissued debt. So that's kind of what you've got to be thinking through, and then looking at where you are, the needs that you have as a city, and how you want to submit those to the voters, if you do want to submit it to the voters, and then kind of proceed along that basis. And of course, as you all well know, you, when you put these things on the ballot, and if they're successfully approved, they're paid from property taxes. And that property tax component that pays that voted bond is on the instant sinking fund side of the tax rate calculation, and does not go against your operating and maintenance side, or that 3.5% side, where you've got that limitation. So voted debt like this is accepted out of that 3.5% limitation, it stands on its own. It's obviously part of the overall tax payment that's made. But that is, you know, sometimes something people think about when they're looking at, you know, how to go about presenting things to the voters. So again, you all tell me if you have other thoughts or questions, but that's a very, you know, 10,000-foot, if not higher, overview of this process. But we're happy, if the decision is made, and it needs to be made before the 16th of February by a vote of the council, you know, then we'll be happy to assist that. Now, if, for example, you're in your meeting, and you say, "Well, we've got three propositions in front of us, and we've now just decided we only need two," then we just ink out, you know, one of the three, and we would get conforming papers, but the council does need to act on something with certainty. So there's going to be that element, should you elect to proceed on with the bond election.
So if I can take just a moment, one of the things that I've talked to both our bond attorney and our financial advisor is these big projects that we have discussed, either obtaining through grants, or through low-interest loans, through TWDB, or other places such as that. The city does not have, within their general fund or utility fund, the capacity from which to service this debt in cash, nor would I make that recommendation to you for these big-ticket items, because it's generational equity from the standpoint of, you do not want the approximately 1,900 people in our city limits now to carry the full cash payment on a $11 million or $5 million project. You want to spread it out over whatever financing term that council makes the decision to do so, so that all of the people who are using the facility as we continue to grow are also paying for said facility in some form or fashion. I know there's been conversations about the city being heavily in debt, which we are not. I know there has also been conversations about paying cash, and there are some things that we should and will look at paying cash for. But whatever we do on Saturday, and whatever conversation is had with council, in order to make the May timeline, you have to approve a resolution outlining the project specifically. You can talk about them from a more general standpoint. One of the things I spoke with Mr. Dransfield about was, you can word the election such as improvements to the water system. However, I think in Rome, there's been some question in the past as to what bonds are being issued for and how the money's going to be used. I don't know if the specificity helps our residents understand the process and the projects themselves, and therefore gives them more care and control over what they vote for. But if we do, say, improvements to the water system, and then we put a two-wit for the drilling of X number of water wells, that can only be used for that purpose. You cannot then turn it around and just do general improvements to the water system at one of our pump stations or booster stations, it has to be for those wells. So that's something else that we'll have to consider on Saturday as well, as we walk through this process. I have spoken to a gentleman with TWDB who gave me yet more information about grants and things that we could potentially apply for. This Clean Water State Rescue Fund, I believe it's CWSRF, is one of the ones through TWDB that you can apply for. It will take us 18 to 24 months to find out if we even qualify for said project. The current West Plant that we have the issue with is already under TCEQ violation back from 2016, and we are running out of time to address it before we start getting fined every day. So these are some of the broader topics on Saturday that we will spend looking, both pictorially and as well as discussing with staff in a more, it's still a regular council meeting, but in a more relaxed format to some extent, so that I can get direction from council as to what you want to do. You may make the decision that May is not the time, we're going to put it in November. That is your purview as well. What I don't want to do is miss a deadline and then find out that, well, you would have preferred this date or this election date, so I'm trying to make sure that you have all the information that you need to make an informed decision, because then we need to turn around and be extremely transparent and educate the residents, because we have serious issues with our water sewer system, that if we don't address them, there's going to be significant failures that is going to affect the residents in a negative manner. And so I am just trying to be as clear with you as I can. The resolution that Mr. Dransfield's speaking of, I have worked with he and one of his associates in his firm, you will have that on Saturday for review. So whatever you do either needs to be decided on Saturday, or we will need to wait till November for said election. Does that make sense? I know we've talked about this almost to the point of discussing everything that would need to be discussed, however, there are still some decisions to be made.
So you'd like to add anything else, Mr. Dransfield?
No, I think you summarized it nicely, and just also remember that, you know, you'll have an opportunity, whichever timeframe, if you have a timeframe for the election you elect to pursue, there'll also be an opportunity to have kind of voter information materials prepared and circulated. So this, if you take the action of calling the election, that's going to be a formal action we have to have, that meets all the statutorily required statements. But more than likely, you'll have some sort of additional voter information materials that, you know, will be sent around to the community to help better explain the purposes for the propositions, should you elect to go that direction.
Thank you. Any other questions from council before we let him go? He will be available for us by cell phone on Saturday if we have any additional questions. I did not ask him to appear, as several topics of discussion will not need his direct input. It's not until you actually make a decision about the issuance therein, and we could contact his associate, I believe, by phone, she'll be available. Okay, thank you, Mr. Dransfield.
Okay, you all have a good evening.
You too.
Have a good time tonight.
Number 10, regional water participation resolution.
Thank you, Mayor. This is an item that is on your agenda again. We have discussed this a couple of times. I was unable to make the last meeting on January the 25th. As you all recall, we had some serious illness going through our offices at that time, but I understand that Mr. Loftus attended on behalf of Rome, as did the mayor. And I learned from Mr. Loftus that I had been volunteered to be on the steering committee for this project, which is going to be very interesting as we walk through this entirety of this discussion for looking for an opportunity for a groundwater source for the region. I don't know if you all had a chance to read the article that was in the Wise County Messenger today, but it was very succinct from the standpoint of what the communities are considering. You will see that in the resolution that's in your packet, that the cities of Boyd and New Fairview have already approved this resolution. What you have before you this evening, outside and apart from the agenda commentary that's been prepared, is the request for, if we are going to participate and sign this resolution, it would require a commitment of our funds to the tune of $10,000 to start the process. I will tell you, and in talking with many, many folks over the past several months about this, that our entire region is going to be scrambling for water very soon, if not already. The Wise County Messenger article mentioned that Wise County itself as a whole is expected to have almost 140,000 residents by 2030, which is a very short six years away. And then every 10 years after that, they're looking at a 21 to 40% increase every year in the number of residents just in our county alone. We do not have surface water rights, and therefore, we need to look at what we can do along those lines. The folks that are going to be on the steering committee would be Mr. Cabralis, the city administrator for New Fairview, Mayor Rodney Holmes from Boyd, Councilmember Ron Pellegrini from Aurora, Wise County Commissioner from Precinct 2, Mr. Kevin Burns, and myself. I also understand from reading the article that, and from Mr. Loftus, who provided me some wonderful notes, I appreciate that, thank you, that Wise County is also interested in participating in this financially, and they are waiting to see what the cities do, if they all buy in, if that's something that they'd also like to participate in. So really, it's fairly straightforward from the standpoint of what we've already discussed leading up to this issue, it's just, does council want to continue down this path and allocate the $10,000 out of fund balance in order to pursue this option on behalf of our community?
I think I'd like to just point out, you know, the $10,000 for the attorney's fees. What's not stated here was the alternative. And the alternative that was presented in a previous meeting was that we hire a lobbyist to the tune of about $30,000 or $40,000. So this is actually a more frugal approach, and hopefully with better results.
I agree. I really appreciated the voices of the members of the first kind of meeting that we had to discuss this, and so I'm going to go ahead and make a motion to approve the resolution amending for participation in our regional water partnership.
May I just ask a really quick question? Where are we getting this out of the budget?
Out of general fund.
Okay. Wouldn't it come out of water?
Water really doesn't have the capacity from which to fund this expenditure. Unfortunately, that fund is fairly depleted.
I'll say it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Very good. All right. I guess we, you know, I'm so glad you were here, Mayor Taylor.
All right. Number 11, calling the rollback election.
Thank you, Mayor. This item is also in your packet. I would like to point out that there was an error on the agenda commentary that Mr. Schumake brought to my attention, so thank you, sir. This, I guess the details that we provided in the background were also included in your budget conversations. As you will recall, we had a petition that was presented by one of our residents to roll back the tax rate in order to lower the amount that residents in Rome are going to pay as it relates to their ad valorem tax from, I think, what did we, 437815, to get the exact number, which would roll it back to .335372 per $100 valuation. That amounts to a difference of about $50 per year, not $50 per month, which would have given anyone a little pause if they'd read that original document. So we did correct that and reposted the packet. As you recall, council had made the commitment for the approximately $200,000 that was going to be generated from this decision. You basically kept the tax rate in the previous fiscal year the same as the current fiscal year, in order to provide some stability to that tax rate. However, it would cause additional fees on, or excuse me, taxes on our residents by $50 per year, which is about 14 cents a day, or $4.21 a month, in order to allocate that $200,000 for streets and roads repairs. We currently budget $120,000, and that is not going to repair any road that we have. That will allow us to do some minor crack seal if necessary. It might allow for some purchase of some supplies, but roadways are very expensive, and even the $200,000 wasn't going to fix everything, but it would be a start to fix some of the issues that we do have that currently exist. So this is on your agenda. The petition was validated, so council's required to call such election. You do have the resolution, or excuse me, the ordinance in your packet, so we would need to move forward with this, so it can also be on the ballot for May.
I guess I've sidetracked a little bit. Are we still working on getting a committee for educating exactly what they're voting on?
We will talk about that on Saturday. That is on your agenda.
I move to approve the ordinance calling the rollback election to be held on the general election day of May 4th, 2024.
I'll say it.
Can I have some discussion?
Yeah.
There's just a couple of counterintuitive things, I think, about tax rates that... There's just a couple of counterintuitive things I think about tax rates that need to be pointed out. You know, you really have little control over your funds going to the federal government and somewhat maybe a little more for the state government. But your best bang for your buck is to spend your tax dollars locally. You're actually going to see something from it and you will benefit from those tax dollars. The other item that's maybe a little bit counterintuitive is that a lot of people are concerned about growth coming at us. And with a lower tax rate, you are going to be encouraging more growth. I just want to point that out. Thank you.
So we got a motion, which was King, I believe, a second, which was Schumake. All in favor?
Aye.
All right, calling the election for mayor, city council member place four and council member place five, city administrator.
Thank you, Mayor. This is fairly self-explanatory. We have three seats up for May election. I would like to call your attention to the agenda commentary. As I mentioned, we had a little hiccup with staff last week and I was trying to plug in for Shayna, but I'm not the best city secretary you'll ever see. So I did have to make a change to this agenda commentary as well. She found and caught the date for me. You will see that in your packet so that we know that it's May the 15th, which is the 11th day after the election, not the 17th, which is what we had for last year. So be mindful of that, but this is basically a housekeeping order and allows us to sign a contract with Wise County to hold the elections so that we can fill those three seats.
Any comments? I'm looking for this, where does it say about May 15th? I'm looking for that.
It's in the corrected commentary. I believe that was probably done after you picked up your packet.
I'm looking at the ordinance right here. I'm on page nine, or agenda item nine.
It's not in the ordinance, it's in your cover document.
That's the day of the canvassing. Is that correct? Yeah.
It's the final day of May 9th.
Okay, yeah, that's all right. Just wanted the clarification. So comments or do we need a motion?
An ordinance, so you will need a motion.
Move we have an election.
I'll say it.
And that is ordinance 2024-04.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay. All right, budget amendment for fiscal year 2023 audit phase.
Thank you, Mayor. This actually is an item that we have on your agenda to adjust the budget from the standpoint of the technology line item and the account services line item and contract labor line item. I have provided you a considerable amount of history in your agenda commentary. You will recall that when we made the decision to upgrade some of our technology and move forward with that particular process, that it had some both one-time costs and ongoing costs. And I was asked by council to build the ongoing costs into the actual budget document. So when we approved that, I did not calculate those numbers in, so they are added here. It would add an additional $45,000 to that line item, to the 8,500 that's already budgeted, that enhanced our cybersecurity as well as our retentions for our email and other things that allows us to search that when we have open records and a variety of other things that council had approved, such as moving our documents to the cloud so that we don't have a server that could potentially go down in the closet that is elderly and just some other enhancements that we've discussed. But I'm happy to answer any questions about that piece if you're interested in additional information.
So you're increasing, you're increasing the budget, you're going to update the budget by $80,000 specifically, and it's going to go into these three different accounts?
That's correct. If you will look at the excerpt from the budget that's provided in your documents as attachment A, you will see that technology shows an increase of $45,000. If you look in the third column over, you will see contract labor by 15 and accounting services by 20. The information in your packet does include an email from our current third-party accounting firm showing that they, based on the number of hours, our finances are far more complex than they used to be and based on the number of hours that they spent, they were required to write off several thousands of dollars worth of time because they had agreed to a contracted amount with us at a certain rate for last year's. However, we do need to conclude FY '23 so that we can get that finished and they have already begun that process. So this is a request from their firm.
And what is the projected date for 2023 to be completed?
End of March. We have already started and are about 80% of the way through the process and have provided them with the work papers and the background and the plethora of reports that go to them in order for them to do that evaluation.
Yeah, I'm pretty certain that'll be required for any bonds we apply.
Correct.
I've just, this is an actual budget change as opposed to a budget amendment, but it was originally budgeted for 8,500 and now it's going to be budgeted for $45,000. We're, I'm not, I'm not confident if you can explain to me where that money's actually coming from.
It would come from the excess that we have in general fund. If you'll recall from the audit, we have several hundred days in reserve.
All right.
I make a motion to approve the ordinance amending the budget for the current fiscal year 2023, 2024 by $80,000 for contract labor, technology, and accounting services.
Any second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Number 14, ordinance update.
Thank you, Mayor. This is one of the things that we have looked at continually as we go through the process of keeping our ordinances up to date. This inventory of assets was brought to you during the budget process and as Mr. Loftus directed, it's a redundant process. We already go through, looked at our fixed assets as it relates to all of our audit and this, I was asked to bring this back with an update. So basically what it does is it just removes that secondary inventory list of things such as pens and pencils and paper and other things that's really not germane to your asset list. And so I had Mr. Loftus's office review all of these and this is what I've gotten back for approval.
Action from council or comment?
Make a motion to approve ordinance update inventory list 2024-07.
Any second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Very good. 15, ordinance update municipal court, section 7.01.005.
Thank you, Mayor. This is another one of those housekeeping items. We have already updated our code as it relates to public works director and police chief, fire chief, et cetera. I found this one was brought to my attention that the municipal court was still saying that the mayor would appoint a clerk of the court and be under the direct supervision of the mayor. As you have a city administrator and that is the reporting structure that has been established, we would just need to update this to make that change.
I have just a question for the attorney. I'm, once again, I'm looking at this. You know, state statute does not make any provision for a city administrator and I realize that that is a local position that's created by council. Now, does that just basically remove the mayor from?
Chief Administrative Officer of the city.
I mean, if I see something that I think is amiss, I mean, who do I go to?
The council. Now, you still have responsibility to review the ordinances, review the city, make sure the city's complying with its own ordinances and you have that responsibility.
Comments and action, whatever.
Make a motion to approve ordinance updating municipal court 2024-06.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Number 16, ordinance update municipal court 7.01.007.
Thank you, Mayor. This is another housekeeping item. You will see in your agenda commentary that there were two sections in our code that said exactly the same thing. So this just removes one section of the code, the 7.01.007, and reserves it for future use. It doesn't change anything in the ordinance because it said the same thing twice.
I make a motion to approve the ordinance repealing the redundant language in section seven of the code of ordinances relative to the municipal court.
Second? All in favor?
Aye.
And number 17, ordinance update vehicle markings, section 1.02.007.
Sorry about that, Mayor. Thank you for the segue. We do have another ordinance on our books as it relates to vehicle markings that I did put the old language in there that talks about that each motor vehicle and piece of heavy equipment would have the name of the city in letters that are plainly legible at a distance of not less than 100 feet. That's fairly subjective based on each person's eyesight. So one of the things when I was talking with Mr. Dominguez as it related to the new public works trucks that we are going to be receiving any day now, as I am hopeful that we change that language to be specific, at least 12 inches tall. I did also have Mr. Atkins' office take a look at this. This is the ordinance that's been returned, so it is in legal compliance and it just cleans up the code a little bit so that when we mark anything in the future, we have some more succinct parameters, if you will.
Make a motion to approve ordinance update equal marking, equal markings, ordinance 2024-0.
Any second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
And so we'll go to executive session.
Ma'am, I don't have anything this evening. It's simply on there for a placeholder in case we need it.
All right, motion to adjourn.
I made the motion to adjourn.
Second.
Wait a minute, Johnson, oh, I should have asked, any future items? Nope. Okay, first, the motion was Johnson. Who did the second?
I did.
All in favor for adjourn?
Aye.
7:10, we are out of here.